This is the February 18th, 2014 City Council meeting where they are voting to take the Northport Avenue TIF to put it in with the downtown TIF. For those of you who aren't familiar with TIFs, it's a basic tax haven for business. Their tax burden to the city goes into this fund that is used to improve infrastructure that will help the business. So, the Northport Avenue TIF was built for the Matthew Brothers, a big window outfit here in Belfast. And once they got all their sewers, that TIF has been exhausted by Matthew Brothers. There's, I think, I don't know, $80,000 left in it if that. And they're taking that to put in the downtown TIF where you have all businesses, especially the Front Street Shipyard, which must have an enormous downtown TIF that goes all for improvements for Front Street. So, I had been campaigning for two years to get the Northport Avenue TIF to save Seaview Terrace because the TIFs open up granting for infrastructure and Seaview Terrace could have been put in the Northport Avenue TIF via the new improvements over in my backyard, basically, at the annex. But they never even commented on it, they just want to rob it. So, here we go. What's going on here? Sorry.
What's going on at the council meeting there? Regular council meeting, numbers...
This public hearing is for the purpose of receiving public comments on a proposed amendment to the previously established Northport Avenue...
And I got an email from this guy over here, Thomas Kitteridge, earlier in the day, telling me that the public hearing would not be held at the beginning of the meeting, as it always is, that it was going to be held later on in the meeting. And the reason why they did that was to, so that I wouldn't be able to speak. And if I came later on to the meeting, which I would have because I really can't bear to be in the room with these people any longer than I have to, I would have missed the open to the public, the public hearing. And they would have said, "Oops, sorry, you can't speak now, it's already been done." And this guy is Officer Ward, who has been stationed at the meetings after they couldn't intimidate me to stop me from speaking at open to the public. Police have never been present at any of the meetings and they brought them there just for me. In, I guess, 2012, I think, they started stationing a policeman at the meetings, ready to take me out if I stepped out of line one bit. And of course, to just intimidate me. He would later follow me out of a meeting and start trying to persuade me to back off City Hall and telling me how he knows all these guys. And for 20 years, they've never had anybody challenge corruption at City Hall and maybe I should find a different way of taking issues. And as he's doing this, my old Bayside friend Ned Lightner, who is also the cameraman that tapes these meetings for City Hall, also comes out and starts doing the same thing to me, intimidating and sticking up for City Hall. And I, I just calmly said what City Hall was doing, how they were illegally flooding me, and Ned stormed away. He got so aggravated that his friend is City Councilor Mike Curley and it was just so outrageous. And then when Officer Ward couldn't persuade me to back off of City Hall, then he started shaming me as a mother, saying that if he was a parent and a mother, he would be concerned how this was affecting the children and would really look at being a parent first. At that point, we were done talking. But of course, I did tell him it was affecting my children and it was very upsetting, but I had to save my home. I mean, this is my home, what am I going to do? This is all I have left. And then, of course, two months later, then the chief, police chief Mike McFadden and Officer Ward show up at my house to have a private conversation with me and do the same. And once the chief couldn't get me to back off, then he resorted to bringing my children into the fold. And that's when I said, "Conversation over, you're not welcome here anymore into my home." So, yeah, it's been tough. Okay, here we go.
Municipal Development District and Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program for the district. The district consists of property located along Northport Avenue, Perkins Road, and Woodrow Lane in the city of Belfast. The proposed amendments reflect changes in economic development priorities and opportunities. A copy of the proposed amendment to the development program will be on file at the Office of Economic Development Director, top floor, Belfast City Hall, 131 Church Street, Belfast, Maine, and may be reviewed there during normal business hours. All interested persons are invited to attend this public hearing and will be given the opportunity to be heard at this time.
Opponents, proponents?
So, we're talking about it now?
Yeah.
You sent me the email saying it was going to be in E1 and everything's...
We will be talking about it twice, now and again at E1. You may speak at the...
Okay, thank you.
See how nasty he is, Joe Solcom? Because he's been caught. They never have two public hearings. So, he's just being nasty to me to tell me that now I get to speak twice. So, he just screwed himself. But I'm confused, you know, I still haven't quite grasped what they were trying to do. In a way, I did, but as I sat there stewing till the second speaking, I started getting very upset. And back to Ned, there's been problems with some key meetings that I spoke at that didn't get recorded and we had lots of issues. That never happened before. And Ned became very testy with me, telling me, you know, I'm challenging his integrity and, and so, we're not even friends anymore, just really bottomed out. It's a shame. I mean, I've known this guy since I moved to Bayside in 1969.
Gloria Allen Belfast, you have robbed my family and our life... Gloria Allen Belfast, you have robbed my family and our life and rights for three years trying to cover up the illegal slaughter of Fort Worther to Seaview Terrace on all three sides, swamping every lot. Accumulating and sending runoff is illegal by main state law. Accumulating snow at all these sites and melting to us is illegal. Withholding public documents and lying is illegal. City work on private property is prohibited. Forcing water without rights of ways or easements to Seaview Terrace, a floodplain, floodzone private property that is not a natural outlet, is illegal and absolutely unethical. You play Russian roulette with our lives and homes every day. And we are forced to pay taxes and sewer bills instead of you paying us for being your sewer. At the November 1st, 2011 City Hall meeting, where I was... November 1st, 2011 City Hall meeting, where I was forced to go public after seven months of torture, Councilor Mike Curley asked Wayne Marshall how he could fix this problem. And Wayne Marshall said it would be very difficult. This TIF that you're proposing to steal from us, you could include Seaview Terrace into it via the annex and provide the infrastructure that should have been in place 35, 40 years ago, as well as the roads, Joe, that you said that were in need of repair over three years ago with roadside drainage. So, I am asking, I am begging for you not to steal this Northport Avenue TIF and motion to get Seaview Terrace in the Northport Avenue TIF and start infrastructure immediately before we're wiped out. Three votes is all I need, right? Mary, Roger, Eric, you can make the difference here of which way we're going with this town. I've proven all the corruption, we've been going at this for three years, it's not going to get any better. I can't sell, I'm not going to go anywhere. I'll keep at it, I'll go after the realtors, I'll go after the city, I'll go after everything that I can. You think I've been at it now, you haven't seen anything yet. Could you please, I want to get on with my life. I came here to start again in peace and safety. Alls I did was buy a home, that's all I did. And I made the mistake of paying cash and not having a disclosure on the property. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else to speak to this matter? See, none?
Okay, now we'll go into the actual TIF agenda.
Okay, consideration of a request to amend the Northport Avenue Tax Incentive Financing District and its development program.
Yes, we had had discussions about this last year, but we had to put it on the back burner for a while due to workload.
Due to workload, due to Lori Allen.
As you may or may not know, back in 2005, the city of Belfast established its first Tax Increment Financing District, known as the Northport Avenue Municipal Development and Tax Increment Financing District, also known as TIF District, comprised of contiguous properties located along Northport Avenue, Perkins Road, and Woodrow Lane. And this was done primarily to facilitate the expansion of Matthew's Brothers at the time, to be able to add a sewer line to allow them to expand. The revenues, the development plan that was established when that district was set up, the only real task or project in that development plan was to retire a $350,000 bond to use to pay the sewer line extension. So, as a result of that, sewer lines have been constructed along Northport Avenue, Perkins Road, and Woodrow Lane. Since that time, things have changed. We've looked at opportunities, we discussed and we made amendments to the downtown waterfront Tax Increment Financing District last year. We're proposing recommending a few modifications to our TIF district, which are, one would be to now additionally capture 100% of the incremental personal property of the district. Right now, we only do real property in the Northport TIF district, which would generate additional revenue in the TIF district. Two, providing the city council the ability or discretion in the future to enter into credit enhancement agreements with developers if the city council so wished in accordance with its TIF policy. Not to say we don't have your proposals in front of us now, but to have that ability if we so choose to use it. And third, allowing for what's called the portage of revenues from this TIF district to the downtown waterfront TIF district. Downtown TIF districts are a slightly different breed from generic TIF districts. You're allowed to transfer funds from other TIF districts into a downtown TIF district. I think we all went through the process of amending the downtown TIF district and recognized that we have a lot of potential projects in the downtown, maybe more so in the Northport TIF district.
Because you don't do anything in the Northport...
And that's essentially a summary of that.
It's all residents.
So far, the funds used in the Northport TIF district have been used to retire that bond and as well as pay a small amount of legal fees and advertisements. It has run a surplus. Ricky Lassane, City Treasurer, recently told me on February 6th that currently our balance is about $78,780 beyond what she used to pay for the TIF, sorry, the sewer bond.
Sewer bond.
Happy to take any questions you might have.
For the business.
Bye. Sorry to delay. Nancy.
Okay. I'm looking at the map and it looks like it goes from...
Oh, this one, Nancy Hamilton? She is evil. She is actually married to the chairman of the planning board, Paul Hamilton. Totally unethical. She should have to recu... What's that word, recuse herself? I mean, she shouldn't even be on city council. She's an easy vote sweyer, everything for the planning board. So, she manipulates the maps and tries to get her point across to the public according... I'm sure Paul has told her what to say, so...
Where in the south? It goes from Jan Anderson's...
Coastal Farms and Foods and Divers.
Coastal Farms.
Matthew Brothers.
And Matthew's Brothers. And then on the north, it's the northern boundary of it?
It's, this is Heinz Lane.
What's, okay, so it...
I'm sorry, I don't have an air recorder.
It doesn't go as far...
It's the four Penob sketchers.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
The four Penob sketchers, okay, thank you.
The map, the boundaries are the same as they were when the district was first created, except that this, we had misdrawn the map, that we had listed this parcel 30-6A in its entirety in the documentation we did, but our map did not reflect that entire thing. So, the parcel was included from the beginning, but we're going to submit a revised map that shows it on the map. But otherwise, we're not changing, not proposing to change the boundaries of the TIF district.
See, they're talking about that because Seaview Terrace is not in the boundaries, but the annex behind me just had new improvements, so it can be included into the Northport Avenue TIF. So, they're just trying to brainwash the public into thinking that Seaview Terrace could not be part of, isn't in the TIF, therefore, the funds wouldn't be able to be allocated to saving Seaview Terrace and putting in roadside sewers.
Okay, thank you.
And then the clarification is that the proceeds of the Northport TIF in the future, if the council wanted them to, could be spent in the downtown TIF district.
Yep.
But they don't have to be.
Yep.
It's not an automatic thing. It's a thing you decide from one, one year to the next.
Yep.
And more brainwashing by saying "if." They're totally going to do it, otherwise, they would have already put Seaview Terrace into the Northport Avenue TIF. Joe Solcom is just saying this to try and taint the public again into thinking that, you know, it's just regular procedure.
And when, when does the sewer get in?
Well, the TIF district is a 20-year TIF district, so I believe I have a 20-year bond.
And that was Mary Mortier, my city council for my ward, who has taken the fifth for three years now, ever since I've started trying to save Seaview Terrace, which is in her ward. She is a real estate agent and she is all for downtown. And also, selling undisclosed houses with all the other real estate agents, no one will even step up and say that this was wrong or give any of the listings on Seaview Terrace that did disclose the stream, I mean, of the same year. They purposely took it out of the disclosure, not listing it because they knew I wouldn't have bought this property. My number one thing was no water issues. And it wasn't disclosed, the property inspector was in with the real estate agents, he didn't disclose any issues with the yard. It looked just like a regular two-by-two private property drainage ditch because Minister Tarpley, the private previous owner, had filled in the ditch to make it appear as if it was just a swell that was along the other sides of my property for drainage off of my property only. Until eight months later and wild rapids poured through my backyard and tore away a quarter of my backyard. And that's when all hell broke loose and I found out that the city was using my backyard as a sewer for half of Belfast.
So, 2025?
Can we take you?
And what was the amount of money you said that left after that?
Currently, the current balance is $78,780 after this year's bond payment of $21,282.56.
And that amount would have covered the sewers on Seaview Terrace. They came in here on September 8th of 2014, when they thought I was going to be down at my brother's funeral in Alabama, unannounced and did a go-pat paving job, ripping up the road, sending more water to me as I stood watching in horror from my window. Paving is always announced two to three weeks in advance to give residents advance notice that their street is going to have construction on it. It was never announced on Seaview Terrace because it wasn't scheduled. They just happened to see because I told the resource officer at the school on that Friday, Greg Sterns, his father is sick with cancer, and we've had many conversations when I see him at the school about his dad's health. His dad comes to a lot of city council meetings, so we have a kind of bond. And so, when I went into the school that Friday after my brother died, I had told him that my brother had just died from cancer. So, that went right to City Hall. And they knew that my brother's funeral was on Monday and that's why they sent the trucks rolling in. But that's also in my blog and another horrible, horrible, evil tactics by City Hall that they just don't care if they kill me.
...$780 after this year's bond payment of $21,282.56. So, it has run a slight surplus every year or in total since...
So, that's accumulated to...
Yes, yes, not 78,000, no, no.
Accumulation of...
Over seven, eight years, yes.
Yep.
And it's from all the new, all the new real estate value in the TIF.
No, I understand that. I'm just was trying to get a sense of how it, was trying to get a sense of how it, how it's accumulating.
I don't have it a year by year, it might have been different, it might have been different on a year by year basis.
Just that's accumulated.
Yes, yes.
It's a place out there.
So, it's a small annual amount?
Small.
So, it's a small annual amount?
Seaview could save us.
At this point in time.
Is that service?
No, the accessible...
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
But we would be including personal property and if other development takes place there, we have it set up in case we want to use those revenues elsewhere.
Need a motion? We're going to now go to E1, which is...
A motion.
Need a motion? We're going to now go to E1, which is the second public hearing on the proposed amendments.
You're screwed, buddy.
We can, and we're going to read the public hearing notes again.
This public hearing is for the purpose of receiving public comments on proposed amendment to the previously established Northport Avenue Municipal Development District and Tax Increment Financing District and Development Program for the district. The district consists of property located along Northport Avenue, Perkins Road, and Woodrow Lane in the city of Belfast. The proposed amendments or amendment reflects changes in the economic development priorities and opportunities. A copy of the proposed amendment to the development program will be on file at the Office of the Economic Development Director, top floor, Belfast City Hall, 131 Church Street, Belfast, Maine, and may be reviewed there during normal business hours. All interested persons are invited to attend this public hearing and will be given the opportunity to be heard at this time.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to, opponents, proponents at this time?
Lori Allen Belfast, I just want to talk a bit about the taxes. So, my area is totally lacking in infrastructure. So, my tax dollars have already been going, as the other residents, to help the downtown area. So, let's be clear on that. There has, I haven't seen any improvements to my area since I've been here in three years. And you have been using Seaview Terrace as a sewer for 40 years, destroying all our properties. The road is shot, okay? I'm also, let me just read this so I don't miss anything. So, the infrastructure in my area is broken or non-existent. I am told, but because nobody will give me information, I am going by another resident's word that for many, many, many years, a sewer under Route 1 by the bypass has been broken. Right? The little bit of infrastructure that we have has been broken. Seaview Terrace doesn't have any sewers, it doesn't have any roadside drainage. The road is shot from all the water underneath it, causing severe cracking and heaving per city manager Joe Solcom when he came to inspect it three years ago and said it was in dire needs of repairs. And he told me he'd get back to me, but never did. Yes, you did, Joe. Okay, you don't lie. I think that's proven. Please do not steal the Northport Avenue TIF from this... Oh, you said it was a 100-year stream in my backyard until I made it to city tax...
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, I'm not going to have a...
Right, well, we're talking about infrastructure.
Not going to have a...
Okay, well, I'm just saying, you're shaking your head no over there.
I'm entitled to say.
You said that was a 100-year natural stream running behind my house so that it would coincide with the ordinance that it's a natural outlet, and it is not. And those original plans were buried and withheld. And it was only because Bob Oily was kind enough to come out and tour with me that he saw all that and was able to see that it was a natural. And I figured if there was ever going to be maps out, it was going to be that next morning. So, I hauled it down here in the morning and flew up those stairs into his office and opened up and sure enough, there were the original plans for my development that I was never allowed to see that were withheld and you had an aneurysm on it.
Mrs. Allen, we're...
No, no, because that, because it is not a natural outlet. You're sending me all this water, you don't, you need to put sewers. I am not your sewer. This TIF is, could give us sewers and save us, okay?
We're talking about the TIF.
That's what this is about. That's right. And this TIF can be saving Seaview Terrace. You can include us in the TIF via the annex, the new improvements from that office building. It's only $78,000, as you're saying. All our tax dollars are going into downtown. The residents deserve to have infrastructure. I am here fighting for it for over two years now. This is unbelievable. I'm down in the center of town fighting for it and stuff. I've got businesses, I got Seth Fair telling me to move out of town, I got attitude from everybody, I can't go to the meetings, I can't have soup, I can't do this, I can't get involved in the schools. My kids are suffering. The stream wasn't disclosed, the property inspector didn't disclose it because he's in with the corruption around this town. I paid for that, I did everything right. I drove up here 500 miles to see that property. My number one concern is I don't want any water problems. They showed me Silver Lane that discloses the stream. I put it in writing, I do not want it. They sell me Seaview Terrace, nothing about that nightmare over there. The worst property in Belfast. All my money, my cash, I'm a domestic survivor that moved here with her kids to start again. And this is how you treat me? You? Sniding at me every time, running to give JB water and kissing, don't, you're going to get me thrown out of the way. I'm going to finish, I'm done here.
Look, if you've got something productive to say, say it, but don't get up on this.
Hold on, I am saying it. Don't you get nasty with me, Mayor. This is my time. You've been drowning me.
I have.
So, I am asking, please don't interrupt me. Please motion to use the TIF to save Seaview Terrace by including Seaview Terrace into the TIF via the annex and begin repairs and rerouting all incoming water to Seaview Terrace away from Seaview Terrace. You can take the Northport Avenue TIF next year after you save us from drowning because what you're doing is basically holding our heads underwater until we drown. And then you're going to have a class action lawsuit. And who picks up all that when you start getting lawsuits in? The taxpayers again. You are not planning properly at law. Save the residents. Fire Joe Solcom. Anybody have anything you want to say to me?
And here we go.
E2, if there's no one else to address the public hearing. My call is hearing closed. Consideration of a vote to amend the Northport Avenue Tax Incentive Financing District and its development program.
Here's the vote.
Happy to take any further questions. I would restate what was said in under E. I've given Amanda what the resolution looks like that we would submit as part of the package to the state of Maine. Essentially summarizes what we've been discussing.
Need a motion on this?
Yeah.
Looking for what the motion would be.
There's Hile Hurley giving his motion.
Motion would be to amend the Northport Tax Increment Financing District, first to include public, personal property, second to allow the...
So, these are basically in the manager's report there?
Yes.
Okay.
So... So, in the form of a motion, two proposed amendments to include the incremental new taxes based upon new business investments into personal property and a two, to allow the city to use incremental taxes, funds generated from the district to be used for economic development purposes in the downtown, downtown TIF, Tax Increment Financing District. And that's it in the form of a motion.
Need a second?
No, the map does not need correction, but I gave, is that the resolution?
You said you had three, you'd have three things and one of them wasn't on.
Yes. You were talking... I submitted what the resolution would look like, but the three, the three changes are the inclusion of personal property, discretion to enter in credit enhancement agreements, and the third one is the portage, portage to the downtown TIF. But I gave the exact language, so...
It's the credit enhancement agreement.
Oh, so the third part is to allow credit enhancement in that district?
Yes.
If the right project shows.
I don't have the, sorry, all the resolution...
Third one is to allow it to be used in the downtown TIF, is what you're saying.
Sorry?
Three Stooges.
One is personal, two is, one is personal business property, two is use for economic development.
Credit enhancement TIF.
Okay.
That's the gist of it, yeah?
Got that, Amanda? In the form of a motion...
And the death of Seaview Terrace.
Second, discussion. Second, discussion. No more discussion, take a vote, all favor?
All hands up.
The vote.
Good job. Very good.
Discussion and possible, possibility for recently announced next generation.
And I'm out of there. After my boycott. Anyway, okay, let me load this up on YouTube, it's a long one.